All right, the time is seven thirty. I'd like to call the September twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two regular meeting for the city of Marlboro to order. Let's all rise for our confessional agents in all silence. All right, first on the agenda, we have the approval of the September thirteenth regular meeting minutes. And the approval of the thirteen, September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two work session minutes. Do I hear a motion?
We'll check in. Victor's gonna check and see.
Okay, we'll hold a few minutes.
We don't believe so.
Okay, all right, so we will proceed with the meeting. Um, do I hear a motion to approve the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes? I can second, will second. All those in favor? Ms. Dean?
I. This, um, Mayor Proten could, uh, I'm going to, uh, can we open to discuss it? There's not a good chance to discuss this.
So we do have a vote on the floor? That we're called for with a vote on the floor? Okay, go ahead.
Okay, there are, I made a few notes about the meeting minutes draft. Um, concerning to the, um, city manager and all the council member. The first thing is that in the executive meeting minutes draft, it not included. Uh, we had a, uh, an executive meeting and there are no meeting minutes draft void. Um, the regular meeting minutes doesn't reflect the subject of the main motion. Uh, it's the subject of the main motion and not summarized in the draft. And the subject would have been, it would happen, uh, the meeting minutes to reflect the agenda and delivery policy doesn't prevent the council to ask question. Um, and the assistant finance committee, uh, doesn't prevent, uh, the council to request a report to assist or form a budget government function. And the third one is the, um, the main motion for item number three, new business, uh, missing a reason to defer, um, in the motion as the motion is the verb is what called verbally in the motion. And the reason to defer is due to the short notice to the council. The council were not informed to vote. The fourth sec, the last thing is the comment after the, uh, the council train, um, in the item four is not included, recorded in the draft. In the common, yes, the information provided to the council is not enough to justify the competitive and selective manner for the project.
Mayor? In. I've asked not to be included in your comment about the council. It is your opinion? And would you state that and not include me as in your opinion because we've not discussed what you are talking about, so I would not want to be included in that.
Okay, I will exclude your name. Uh, any council member who want to be excluded from that statement?
Just proceed with your discussion, please.
Okay, so now I will exclude the council dean from the council regarding the same matter. And then, the fourth section, minute minutes draft, uh, doesn't, uh, reflect, um, the comments from, uh, the council. It's only recorded the, uh, J. Becker Discuss Order in twenty twenty-two oh seven to set some display of the tax military rates. It's missing, um, council comments about the last year. Uh, the same suggestion will make to reduce the military rate, but it not passed. Council can concern about time delivery to the information package to the council. Doesn't have the council to be able to discuss, uh, to really have a discussion in the first reading. And in the, um, discussion about the two hundred eighty five, receiving two hundred eighty-five thousand grants and the, um, design, uh, the construction design, um, is still at stake. It, um, it, uh, doesn't reflect the council, uh, council concern. The feasible study have not been done. In the time delivery, the project information to the council can, is full, to the ca, to the council explode. Councilor Dean were on Friday of the previous week, uh, the voting day, which was about four days prior to the voting days. It's not enough time for the council to be informed to vote. And, uh, in the, uh, one section, the discussion number two, uh, that written in the draft, that never happened. It was the summary of a conflict and filing, uh, of, uh, finance committee summary of filing. So, uh, that's all the concern that I observed from the meeting minutes. And having them in voice and the the recording on something that not happened, we need to remove it from the draft. And the rest of the information, I would suggest to have them into the meeting minutes. Uh, it's what, it will allow better transparency. So it's, it will benefit the public if they're not able to come and they took three minutes. They would be able to, um, have a better understanding of, uh, the, um, the meeting.
Uh, is that, did that complete your discussion, Ida?
And I would like, that's all the concern that I have. And I would like to hear the feedback from the council members.
Yeah?
Yes, ma'am.
Again, I would like to, um, make the, um, request that, uh, when Councilwoman Tran is referring to her opinion, not to state the council's opinion or that it is the council, it is your opinion and not that of the full council. I would appreciate it if you would, uh, change that and have it to reflect that that is your opinion and not the, uh, total council as an entire.
Uh, I, uh, have that input. I have just, um, clarified with the rest of the council members. And none of the council member, uh, calls to have the man, they have done so referring in the council body.
All right, that completes our discussion. Uh, we have a motion on the floor.
And, uh, in that case, I'm going to make a few of my motions. So the first one, you to defer, uh, I'm, I'm making another main motion to defer the approval of the meeting minutes, uh, the executive meeting minutes draft we missed.
We hear a motion. We need a second? No second, the motion fails.
I'm making the second a main motion.
Really?
The second a main motion is I am making another main motion to remove the discussion number two in the meeting draft or section because the discussion never happened.
I hear a motion, is there a second? Motion fails.
I'm making the third a main motion. Uh, that, uh, to add the, this, the council concern in the discussion about the tax military rate. Council, uh, concerned that last year, we had the same suggestion to reduce the millet, but it did not pass. And council can concern about the time of delivery, the information doesn't have the council, it's full council dean to be able to discuss, um, in the first hearing.
I hear a motion, is there a second? Hearing that, the motion fails.
I'm making the fourth a main motion to add the language again, well, in the meeting, the one section, meeting minutes for the meeting on September the thirteenth. On, uh, council can concern the, um, the feasible study have not been done. And the time delivery, the project information to the council in four days. It's not enough time for council to be informed and vote. But two project, first one, it received a grant of two hundred eighty-five thousand and the project beside the exhibit place.
I hear a motion, is there a second? Hearing that, the motion fails.
And I'm making the fourth a main motion to add the following, the language to the new business, the, to the regular meeting under, uh, new business item four, the comment after the vote. The information provided to the council is not enough to justify the competitive in selecting vendor for the project.
I hear a motion, is there a second? Hearing that, the motion fails.
I'm making the fifth a main motion to add the following, the language to the main motion on item three for the work, the regular meeting minutes on September the thirteenth. Uh, the reason to defer the mo, the main motion was uh, due to the short notice to the council. Council is not informed to vote.
I hear a motion, is there a second? Hearing that, the motion fails. You good?
I'm good.
Okay. All right, back to the original motion. I will go back to this Councilwoman Dean. Councilwoman Wong? Councilwoman Tran?
May?
I vote aye. I believe, uh, Mayor Lampel has, uh, joined us on the, on the call. Mayor Lampel?
I have, and I vote aye, I vote aye as well. Motion carries.
Motion carries for the approval of the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two regular meeting minutes. Uh, is there a motion to approve the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two work session minutes? I will second. Discussion. Hearing none.
Mayor Proten, if I may, again, I would like to request that going forward, that Councilwoman Tran refer to her opinion and it not be the opinion, opinion of the entire council.
Discussion heard.
So I believe I received a message. I told council dean in the council, uh, in the council body, any ca, council member would like to inform himself on the statement of the council.
All right, we have a motion on the floor, it got properly seconded. We will move to a vote. Councilwoman Dean? Councilwoman Wong?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tran?
May?
I vote aye. Mayor Lampel?
I don't, sorry, may?
I vote aye. I'm not here, I thought I heard Qua say yes, but it's a majority.
I apologize. All right, so the motion carries on the approval of the September thirteenth, twenty twenty-two work session minutes. Moving on. Orders and resolutions.
Uh, may I ask, oh, we have the meeting, um, minute draft for the executive meeting.
No, executive meetings on executive discussions are closed meeting.
That's right.
Yeah.
So you cannot publish the discussion on an executive session.
I'm not asking for publicist, I'm asking for the record of the executive meeting minutes. In the past, we always have the meeting minutes for the second.
We've not ever seen.
I, I will give the floor to, uh, the city clerk.
She's correct, uh, but due to the fact that, um, this, I'm doing the city attorney because the city clerk was not present for the whole thing. Uh, and once you get our side of the minutes, if she will take it, then we will put it into the next, uh.
It will be on the next meeting agenda.
I appreciate the information.
All right, so we will move on. Orders and resolutions, this is the second reading of ordinance twenty twenty-two dash oh seven to set and declare the tax military. Sitting here, did you want to read it?
Do you want to read the ordinance for us?
Sure.
All right, preamble and finding for this ordinance, number two zero two two zero seven. It's an ordinance of the mayor and council of the city of Marlboro, Georgia to set a thirty tax military in the city of Marlboro, Georgia for calendar year two zero, two thousand twenty-two and setting for certain information regarding rollback rates and for other purposes being ordained by the council and of the city of Marlboro, Georgia. On regular council meeting on September twenty seventh, twenty twenty-two at zero seven thirty out, uh, I'm sorry, at seven thirty P. M. as follows. Section one, it is hereby ordained by the mayor and council of the city of Marlboro, Georgia after calendar year two zero two two. The gross mileage and maintenance for operations is nine point zero one eight mils less the rollback for local option sales tax at zero point five eight two mils. Leading to net mileage for the maintenance and operation purposes to be set at eight point four nine nine mils. Appendix A shall be a part of this ordinance by reference. All ordinance, section two, all ordinances or party ordinances in conflict herewith and are hereby repealed and shall be of no further force or effect from the date of the enactment of this ordinance. And section three states this ordinance is hereby enacted and shall be of full force and effect from this twenty-seventh day of September, twenty twenty-two. And ordained on this twenty-seventh day of twenty twenty-two, the city of Marlboro, Georgia. Signed by, will be signed by Mayor John Lampel, should have passed.
Awesome, thank you. Uh, we did hold the second public hearing during the work session today, so we will move to, uh, take a vote on it this evening. Do I hear a motion?
So me.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Could we have, uh, discussed more in the meantime? So this not really a, a discussion, it's just a comment, uh, for about the setup of the military rate. Uh, the similar suggestion last year, uh, were to have instead of having the military that we only had for four year prior to that, uh, the suggestion to have the lower military to make sure the city would be collecting the same tax amount compared with the prior years, uh, the previous year. Uh, and for this time, when we set the military lower, it's going to cost the city a hundred seventy thousand, seven hundred twenty-five dollars less. So that's the just for the information. And anytime that the city can help and assist, uh, the taxpayer uh, and make sure we still be able to operate, uh, that's always, uh, is the good thing.
Any other discussion, Mayor? Do you have anything that you would like to add to the discussion?
I'm fine, thank you.
All right. Do I hear a motion? Oh, great, all right, awesome. You guys are on your toes, do I hear a second?
We have second already.
Okay.
Your comments through there? All right, uh, Councilwoman Dean?
Everybody.
To vote.
To vote.
Oh, yes, I think we did already.
No, no, no.
The motion on the floor is there and?
Yes.
We're voting aye, okay. Councilwoman Dean? Aye. Okay. Council, Councilwoman Wong?
Aye.
Councilwoman Tran?
Aye.
I vote aye. Motion passes unanimously. All right, let's keep this show moving. All right, general comments? Any general comments? Jerry Crist?
How does, I've just been sitting here making notes.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, do we have a schedule for the street sweeper? Does he just come whenever or do we have a schedule?
They usually run once a quarter. They just ran about three weeks ago, I believe. So they should be coming back around pretty soon.
Well, we'll wait till the hurricane goes up. That's a waste of time. Okay, drain, uh, thank you for cutting the grass on like our, look much better. Uh, but I noticed the drain's still got a lot of trash. If we're gonna get as much rain as they're saying, it's gonna get stopped up a bit there. That's it.
Any other comments?
Yes. You know, about this military, things change. So what wasn't approved last year was not needed last year. They had other priorities. But we understand that things are changing and you need to go ahead and proceed with the military. I'm glad it passed. It need to happen and we need to kill that horse, just let it die. Five, six, seven, eight, uh, comments just need to stop. We just need to carry on with our business. We don't want to hear anybody just talking, talk, 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 talk. And as far as the DDA and the URA with the dark space and all of our properties, we have meetings, we discuss them. We we do the best for the citizens of Marlboro. We don't take that lightly. We want Marlboro to succeed. We don't want it to die. And if we don't carry forward, it will die. There's a lot of changes that have happened and we need to keep rolling on. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Any other comments? Any comments from the council?
Oh. I, I would like for you to notice that nobody's here. Uh, the word I get from neighbors and friends is that they come up here and they just listen to Ms. Tran ramble on and on and on, the same thing over and over and over. And, you know, we're all busy, we all have things to do, but we set aside time to come and listen and get work done. This is holding back, uh, progress in our city. And by the way, while I'm up, I'd like to thank the city manager, everybody that works here, the police officers, they're doing a fantastic job and city man and you can, council people, with the exception of Tran. You're just taking up too much time for things that have been discussed over and over and over and we're just sitting here. Let's get going, let's get the town moving. Okay, thank you. That's my personal opinion, nobody else.
Comments from the council?
Um, yes, I do, yeah, um, would like to, um, reiterate that the comment about the council. Um, I just want to say that the council had a retreat and one of our goals and the commitment that we made was to meet with each other, with the city manager. We are informed and updated on what is happening prior to the council meeting. So we have the information. I get to meet with you, Councilwoman Tran. And that, um, I, I can be flexible to a point. And all we need to do, contact the city manager or if he, um, delegate that task to, to Victor to let him know when we are available so that the city manager can work that into his schedule. He has a schedule as well, you know, and I think we should be more considerate of that, of his time because he is running the city. I mean, I understand he's here to help us, but we can be more considerate of his time. And otherwise, um, you wouldn't have to say that the opinion of the council, uh, don't have time. We do have time, we've made time. So it is incumbent upon each council member to contact. And that was, uh, one of the goals that we committed to, to make a better team. So we can't become a better team if we're not all working on the goals. And that's my comment and, uh, I would appreciate it again if you would refer to your opinion and not the council. That is why I say it is your opinion because council has been informed for the most part because we need, Councilwoman Qua has met, he and I has met, have met with the city manager. So we get information, we ask questions prior to. And that's the way that it should be to prevent the long dialogue for the citizens. We want to be able to be informed when we get there and that is the reason for that. And I'm gonna stop talking.
Thank you, Councilwoman Dean. Councilwoman Wong?
I have no comment, thank you.
All right, uh, Councilwoman Tran?
Yes, record a very important. And if it's, we, we, uh, we are at the rapid official. Our job is, we have to do several jobs. And if we can't keep the transparency in the meeting minutes to not only benefit the taxpayers if they want to follow and have a look to see how did we discuss? How did we make the decision? And how, uh, on their behalf, that's good for them. It's also good for us. If we needed to refer anything, we can go to the meeting minutes to reference. I cannot express how important though official document are. They are saying this, when the auditor, and we have the, uh, CFO, uh, Prab they said here in the meeting, correct me if I were wrong, that when the auditor come to audit, the fourth thing that they read is the meeting minute. So that I guess that the source, the shortest way to express how important though document are. Sometime we can look over, look at him like tonight. We just passed a meeting minutes that recorded something did not happen. And I don't, I'm not quite certain if the council have the authority to do that. And city manager, please do me a favor to ask the city And city manager, please do me a favor to ask the city attorney to review that. Are we able to pass something that never happened, but it recorded in the meeting, in the draft? Are we, do we have the authority with our votes? Thank you.
Mayor Lampel, any comments?
I'm good, just enjoy the weather, looks like it's gonna get a little rough up there.
Yes, sir. I have no comments, and at this time, is there a motion to adjourn the meeting? All right, seconds. So this will.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Dean.
Yes.
Tran.
Yes.
Baum.
Wave your hand.
Yes, unanimous, all right, thank you.
Good night, all, councilor Tran.
Have a good night. Good morning for me.
Oh, you waiting up?